We're recording tonight's meeting, and if everyone please silence your phones, that would be great. My name is Jacob Anderson, and I'm the Clickittat County District One Commissioner. This forum is sponsored by the Nonpartisan League of Women's Voters of Washington, Clickittat and Skamania Counties at Large Group, as well as the Columbia River Gorge News. We are speaking tonight with the candidates for the White Salmon Valley School Board, Chris Osness, Matthew Byrne, and Lori Stanton. Mike Hughes could not attend this evening, and we did not receive responses from Andrew Chapman or Todd Andrews. These candidates will be invited to submit a video statement with the questions that are asked tonight. Those videos and tonight's recording will be posted on the Clickittat, Skamania, League of Women's Voters Facebook and YouTube pages. The candidates joining us did not receive these questions in advance. Some of the questions were written by the sponsoring organizations and some were submitted by the public in advance of tonight's forum. Candidates have agreed to stay on topic and will have sixty seconds to respond to each question. We will alternate which candidate answers first, and I will repeat the question to each candidate. We will have the time keeper visual to the participants, and the time keeper will hold up a yellow card when there's ten seconds left and a red card when time is up. If necessary, I will interrupt a candidate to complete their sentence and then discontinue their answer once the allotted time has expired. The order of the candidates on the the order of the candidates' responses will follow the order of the candidates' names on the ballots. So Chris will go first, followed by Matthew, and then Lori. This forum is an opportunity for these candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make a more informed decision when you mark your ballot. Please make sure you are registered to vote. You can do that online at vote411.org or at an elections office near you. And now let's begin. Again, my name is Jacob Anderson, and I will be tonight's moderator. Now we will hear from each candidate for their three-minute introductions. Chris, can you please tell us a bit about yourself and why you're running for office?
Can we change the order that we answer from backwards to forward? I didn't really prepare a intro, so I'm just gonna shoot from the cuff here. I come from a family of public school teachers. Both my parents were high school schoolteachers. My sister teaches first grade. My, my, uh, my grandpa, my aunt, they're also were public school teachers. So I'm very sympathetic to the, the cause to, to public education, and I feel very strong that strong public schools make strong communities. That's all.
And now Matthew.
I guess one at a time. Hi, everyone. I'd like to start just by thanking League of Women Voters, Columbia Gorge News, for putting this on, as well as for Commissioner Anderson for agreeing to moderate. My name is Matthew Byrne. I'm a lifelong gorge resident. Last seven years on this side of the river, but before that, grew up in Parkdale. I'm running for, for office primarily to continue to support the district, find ways that I can leverage the skills that I have professionally, which I'm excited to talk about today. To see how we can move forward from what has been a kind of difficult couple of years between the pandemic and then also in the last year with some of the transitions that we've had with the superintendent position, as well as some of the financial complexities that we, we've had to deal with as a district. And continue to support our teachers, our families, as well as the administration, which I think is on the right track here. And I think just needs a fair amount of support, as well as accountability from our board. And I'm very excited to, you know, serve our community in this role and get to learn more as we continue in it. Thanks.
And now Lori, please tell us a bit about yourself and why you're running for the office.
Thank you again, League of Women Voters, Columbia Gorge News and Commissioner for being here and giving us this opportunity. My name is Lori Stanton, and I am a fourth-generation gorge girl. My family, I have, I come from a long line of community organizers and people dedicated to volunteering and supporting our community locally. It was just sort of the way we were raised. My mom was in Seroptimist. My dad was in all of the service organizations in town, and I would go along with them. My mom started the ELL program at the, in our school district before there was dedicated funding for it. So it's just kind of in, in the culture of my family, I would say. And when the opportunity came to run for school board six years ago, at first I did not see myself as that person. And it took a little convincing. Someone very dear to me encouraged me and repeatedly said, you should run, you should run, you should run. And it took a while for me to see myself in this role. And now that I'm here, I cannot think of a better way to support this entire community. There is nothing more important than how we are taking care of our kids, that continuum, and we are in the schools, we are just one piece of this continuum of care for our kids. Let's see. Yeah, I, I'm just excited to answer the rest of the questions and tell you guys a little bit more about my philosophies.
Now, before we get started with the questions, I would also like to mention that each of these candidates are running for different spots in the, the lineup. So, so with our first question, we will get started, and we will start with you, Matthew. What qualifications do you have that will be an asset to the school board? What are your strengths?
Yeah, it's sweet, since you just mentioned that. I am running for position two on the ballot, just as a, as a reference. So a little bit about my professional background. For the last ten years, I, I've worked in the nonprofit sector, doing quality improvement and strategic planning for nonprofits, primarily mental health and substance use disorder, as well as social service organizations. And my primary focus with those agencies has been on youth and families and how we support them, wrapping care around, and education is a primary component, because that is where our kids are most of the week. So my philosophy in terms of support for our families is ensuring that both in and out of the classroom, our families feel like they have the supports and resources that they need. And that comes down to our administration and teachers also having what they need. So I'm a big proponent of that, working cross-sector, because that's important. And yeah, I guess I have to stop.
Sixty seconds goes by real fast. Thank you. And now Lori, what qualifications do you have that will be an asset to the school board? And what are your strengths?
I have been working in K-12 education for twenty-five years. I work in special education. I'm a speech-language pathologist. I'm a parent. And I have been on the school board for six years now, probably through some of the toughest six years that white salmon education may have seen. And there's been a little bit of trial by fire. I've worked collaboratively with this community in so many ways, with our mayor, with some of the people that are out here right now, program building. It seems my hobby and my employment and my life's mission appears to be kids. All the community organizing, after-school programs for kids that I've helped build and develop. It all is surrounding kids. So I think there's just, there is almost not a facet of education that I've not had a hand in.
Thank you, Lori. And now Chris, what qualifications do you have that will be an asset to the school board? And what are your strengths?
Well, I, one of my greatest asset is I have a child that will be attending Whitson next year. And, and I knew at some point that I would be very interested in serving on the school board. And when the position came up, I, I decided it was time. And it was actually great timing. And I guess my, my best asset is I'm, I'm very passionate, because like, like these candidates next to me, we all have a stake in the game, because we all have children that are going to be going to school here. And he's just, my child is just going to be starting this journey, and I think now is just a great time to, to build the school up from, from, from this, this recent reckoning that we've had. That's all.
We'll try not to have a repeat of the feedback. Okay, question number two, and we'll start with Lori. What steps should the board take to prevent a repeat of the budget shortfalls and deficits as we've seen earlier this year?
That is definitely top of mind. Certainly, the best thing we can do and have done is to get the right people on the bus. Having the right person in the superintendent's position is absolutely number one. And I do feel incredibly certain that we do now have the right person in that position. Also, the board ourselves, we are accountable for that as well, and we need to provide more oversight, we need to pay better attention, we need to ask those questions when they come up and not be pushed aside when we ask the tough questions. We, like always, we have to continue to listen to our stakeholders, the parents, the teachers, and be available to hear their questions and concerns and bring those voices and concerns forth. And I think at this point, we have all of those pieces in place. We will be putting together a financial committee to help with the oversight of the district budget. So I think we are well on our way.
Thank you, Lori. And now Chris, what steps should the board take to prevent a repeat of the budget shortfalls and deficits as seen earlier this year?
Well, it's, it's hard to follow up on Lori, because she hit all the points. But the, really, the biggest thing is we have a great superintendent that everyone's extremely excited about, and he, he has his family in the district, and he's extremely excited to be here, working for white salmon. So having the right person in the job is the, is really the beginning, the first correct decision that was made. I don't know if I, if I make the board, I, I'll have to answer that question later on. Finish the question, I should say.
And now Matthew, what steps should the board take to prevent a repeat of the budget shortfalls and deficits as seen earlier this year?
Well, I, I would echo the points of the last two candidates, but to add on to that, you know, continuing to have updates from, from this newly formed financial committee, tying the superintendent to some metrics that we will get updates on on a more regular basis. But I think it's also pretty critical for the district in order to get out of the hole is to diversify a little bit some of the funding streams, and it's not as sustainable as we probably like, but there is a lot of opportunities for block grants out there from Washington State, as well as from the feds, that can help leverage some additional dollars to supplement and get us to that reserve that point that we're hoping of eight percent by the end of the year. So it's going to be chipping away, because we really ate quite a bit. But ensuring that, that the community, as well as the district, are together on the updates on how that, that is progressing.
And our last question from the Columbia Gorge News. Libraries in the Columbia Gorge, as well as nationally, have seen an uptick in requests for the banning of certain books. What are your thoughts on book banning in school libraries? And we'll start with you, Chris.
I really trust our professionals to make the decisions about the books that should be in the library. Librarians are professionally trained, and I really believe that they're making the right decisions. I really welcome the, the parents to become involved in the books that their children are reading, and they should do that personally with their children and have that interaction. I'd prefer that all the books that the librarians feel that should be there are available to all kids whose parents feel they should read those.
Thank you, Chris. And now Matthew, libraries in the Columbia Gorge, as well as nationally, have seen an uptick in requests for banning of certain books. What are your thoughts on book banning in school libraries?
Well, first, I don't think it's the highest priority of the district. You know, we have a lot of things to be working through right now. Book banning is definitely not one of those, and I, I definitely empathize with, with folks who, you know, what the, you know, want the best for their kids. I think the thing to keep in mind, especially around some of these content questions, is what is beneficial to everyone in the, in the community? So, you know, while, while maybe a certain subject matter might not be appropriate for your own kid in your view, it also might be very meaningful for another family, especially when we're talking about some of our historically disenfranchised groups, queer kids that are navigating some tough times. So there's some, I, I, I just don't think it's the, the highest priority of the district, in my opinion. And like Chris was saying, I very much trust our professionals in the library system.
Thank you. And now Lori, libraries in the Columbia Gorge, as well as nationally, have seen an uptick in requests for the banning of certain books. What are your thoughts on book banning in school libraries?
I do agree that our librarians are well-trained, highly qualified professionals. They do their job meaningfully and thoughtfully. At the same time, I do understand parents wanting to have a say in the material that gets into their child's mind and is a part of their education. I one hundred percent support any parent that wants to opt out, who wants to ask their child to not read specific material or content. I, I think staying involved closely, monitoring what your child is ingesting is critical, and that is your opportunity to guide your child's growth and development and ethical development. I would never support someone choosing for a parent what their child can or cannot read, one way or the other, regardless.
Thank you. The remainder of our questions were submitted by the public, and we'll start with a few questions on safety. A parent writes, I had to remove my student from the White Salmon Valley School District because of bullying. What are your ideas to make the district a safer place for all students? And we'll start with you, Matthew.
Well, one, very sad to hear that that was an experience from, from a family in the district. I, I think that comes down to training and support for our staff and teachers, ensuring that we are creating safe environments within our schools, that we are, are teaching environments of empathy, empathy and support for our kiddos, so they can succeed. And that there's plenty of training opportunities for our staff and teachers to, to recognize when, when those sorts of things are happening, so they can advocate for those students have discussions with, with parents. And that we are kind of all on the same page in terms of supporting everybody who's in the classroom.
Thank you. And now Lori, a parent writes, I had to remove my student from the White Salmon Valley School District because of bullying. What are your ideas to make the district a safer place for all students?
That is heartbreaking, and I'm, I really, it, it breaks my heart to think a child that came through our doors had that experience, and I, I don't know why bullying is so hard to get a hold of and get a handle on. I feel like the more staff that we have present around the kids with proper training and awareness, so that every kid has someone at the school that they can connect with and talk to, they have a trusted adult, at least one. I think we should be monitoring student by student. In our small school district, we can do that. Monitor student by student who is engaged in after-school activities, who is showing a change in their academics. I, I think just paying attention and allowing our teachers the bandwidth to do that, to be paying attention, to be aware, and to be building those connections. It's hard to do if our staff are spread so thin. And that just all starts with building up our resources, our fund balance, protecting our budget, and being responsible with our utilization of resources.
Thank you. And now Chris, a parent writes, I had to remove my student from the White Salmon Valley School District because of bullying. What are your ideas to make the district a safer place for all students?
I'm going to echo what they both said, that it really comes down to training, that teachers don't just have to teach these days, they have to do other things on top of that. So with training and then empowering them to, you do a lot, utilize that training to look out for bullying incidents and then to act on it and to back them up. That's what we, we really need to be asking of our teachers and, and backing them up when they do interfere with bullying.
Thank you. How can the school district work collaboratively with parents, teachers, and mental health professionals to identify and support students who may be struggling with mental health challenges? We will start with you, Lori.
This is one thing I think our district does exceptionally well. And we did this really as a community on our own. We have the Health and Wellness Center up at the high school, and that was approved through voter funds, voter-approved levy funds, and it is running at really high capacity and serving a lot of kids and doing really meaningful work. It's never enough, though. It is just never enough, and I feel like there needs to be more collaboration and partnerships as much as we possibly can. I know we have contacts and we work closely with SWATCH and some other mental health organizations and providers in the area. And I, I don't know how, but we need to build up capacity in the community, because to meet the need of all of the health and well-being of all of our students right now, it is really more of a burden than the school can possibly tackle right now.
Thank you. And now Chris, how can the school district work collaboratively with parents, teachers, and mental health professionals to identify and support students who may be struggling with mental health challenges?
Well, a lot of it comes down to money. We need staff. So part of the, the school board, one of its main objectives is to secure the budget and decide how that budget's going to be spent. So more money we can secure, the more, better we're going to be able to address those issues. But on top of that, our school board is to, to really listen to, can you repeat the question again, actually? I'm getting lost already.
How can the school district work collaboratively with parents, teachers, and mental health professionals to identify and support students who may be struggling with mental health challenges?
Yeah, the school board, we, we do just be open to listen and listen to, you know, people that come to talk to us, and whether that's at board meetings in, at the harvest market around town. My time's up.
Matthew, how can the school district work collaboratively with parents, teachers, and mental health professionals to identify and support students who may be struggling with mental health challenges?
Lori touched on it a little bit, but strong partnerships and referral systems to other agencies. I, the district simply doesn't have the capacity in terms of providers and counselors to be able to meet the needs of our, fully meet the needs of our students and the complexities outside of, of, outside of school. And when we have early interventions and screening in place in the schools, and that's really the focus, is how do we, we focus on outreach to families that we, we've identified as having higher social complexities, maybe a lot going on outside of school, they need additional support, and making sure that they have access to the resources they need. And a lot of that is partnerships with other agencies and social service organizations within the community to ensure that, that those kiddos and families have the supports that they need. Because most of those very complex kids need a higher level of mental health services than our district can actually provide in-house.
Thank you. And this one will start with Chris. How do you plan to ensure the safety of students and staff in our schools while balancing the concerns surrounding gun violence and access to firearms on school premises? What policies or measures do you advocate to address this complex issue? Good luck in one minute.
Yeah. I, I think the, with that issue is you address, we need to identify children that are falling through the cracks and not seeing any of those children are going to become shooters, but we need to address their, you know, their, their school attendance, their, their social emotional issues, their issues they might be having at home, and make sure that they do not fall through the cracks, because when they fall through the cracks, that's when, when things really start to fall apart. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Matthew, how do you plan to ensure the safety of students and staff in our schools while balancing the concerns surrounding gun violence and access to firearms on school premises? What policies or measures do you advocate to address this complex issue?
Well, I, these are interrelated questions, obviously. You know, if, if we have students who are really struggling, who have complexities outside of the home, who may are more likely to, to, to be either victims of violence or solicit violence upon their fellow students, we need to be having good systems in place, policies in place to be able to recognize those kids who are needing additional support, ensuring that we have safe spaces within the school environment, and that both administrators and teachers know what those resources are. So we can make sure that if something were to be happening, that we are able to ensure the safety of our students and get resources, get law, either law enforcement and quickly, or have additional supports in, inside the, the district as well. So a lot of that work is done upfront and in policy and ensuring that we're having those conversations ongoing.
Thank you. And now Lori, how do you plan to ensure the safety of students and staff in our schools while balancing the concerns surrounding gun violence and the access to firearms on school premises? What policies or measures do you advocate to address this complex issue?
This is a multifaceted issue, and solutions are equally complex. It does start with the attention to our students' health and well-being and the circumstances that they are facing at home or in the community, for starters. Our partnerships in the community for proper referrals and screening to get mental health support and identify students in crisis. I think, you know, we have, we've unfortunately had a couple of opportunities to practice what would happen if there was a, an active shooter in our district, and that was terrifying. But I feel like our district did a really good job partnering with our law enforcement, city, county, and state law enforcement. They did a really good job, and in retrospect, I am so grateful, because I felt like my son was safe when that was happening, long before we knew there really was no shooter. And the final thing we need to touch on is the safety of our buildings.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to curriculum. How do you envision improving our social studies and language arts curriculum to better equip students with critical thinking skills, effective communication, and a deeper understanding of diverse perspectives? And we'll start with you, Matthew.
Well, I think it's ensuring that our students have access to a wide variety of outlooks and viewpoints and that they're able to interact with, with that content in, in both group settings, individually, and that throughout, throughout the school year, that they're able to celebrate some of the things that they're learning. This is the passionate, wonderful things about education is getting people to, getting families and students to be really excited about what they're learning in school. And if there are books and different arts and literature that, that is exciting a student that we're able to celebrate that throughout the district, whether or not that's at the board level, getting to hear, hear about what kids are learning and also share that with the community. I, I hope it's celebratory, so that's, that's what I hope to instill.
Thank you. And now Lori. Thank you. And now Lori, how do you envision improving our social studies and language arts curriculum to better equip students with critical thinking skills? Effective communication and a deeper understanding of diverse perspec- perspectives?
The beautiful thing about a school system is that we have this process of continuous improvement. It's um the process of our strategic plan, which is a five-year cycle, which we are just about to start into. The we use a review of data that is our academic data, our um healthy students survey. Is that what it's called, Kaylin? Right? Healthy youth survey um and our learning outcomes data. As well as input from stakeholders. And we use that data and our knowledge of best practices to review not just our curriculum, which is certainly an important piece, but also our instructional practices. Um you know, the the methods that we are using to teach um the systems for helping a student if they are not. Um quickly um achieving the academic standards. Do we have those multi-tiered systems of of support? Um so it's not just curriculum, but that is just one piece of it. And we are beginning that process uh to review all of that.
Thank you. And now Chris, how do you envision improving our social studies and language arts curriculum to better equip students with critical thinking skills? Effective communication and a deeper understanding of diverse perspectives?
Well, I'm not aware uh our I haven't served on the school board yet and I have not. Uh studied that what kind of curriculum we have, so I can't specifically say what segments we're lacking. Uh so if if I do am elected, I I really absolutely want to fill those gaps by seeing what is being taught currently.
Thank you. What will you do to ensure that all children get a full arts education in the White Salmon Valley School District, including music, art and theater? We'll start with you, Lori.
We have had to rely on our community for many, many, many years through passage of levies in order to provide. Those uh those extras. Um and we are so grateful. Otherwise, we would not have these. Uh fantastic programs uh to to provide to our kids. Um I think continuing to partner with our community. Um as to with the voters to hopefully keep passing some levies. Um and we need to advocate at the legislative level for better funding because these are critical pieces to a well-rounded education. It's not just reading, writing and math. Um I have seen the value of the arts to students. It's not my path. But I know that it can be a student's identity. It can be their their person and their their voice. Uh to see to have seen our music program so fragile and almost not happen this year. Um that was terrifying that we are that close to not having that music program. Um so um continuing to work with our community, passing levies and working with our legislature.
And now Chris, what will you do to ensure all children are getting a full arts education in the White Salmon Valley School District, including music, art and theater?
Uh again, it goes back to funding. Without funding, you can't hire professionals uh to teach your kids. Uh living in a small town, the I recently talked to a lot of people about how volunteering is very important about. Making a small town work. And if that can serve. To fill in some of the holes that our school district has, then then we should look into that. We should also have more creative solutions as far as. Partnering with uh the local theater for to for to for productions that the high school puts on. Um basically reaching the community to fill in the holes that that we can't find with funding.
Thank you. And now Matthew, what will you do to ensure that all children get a full arts education in the White Salmon Valley School District, including music, art and theater?
Well, um you know, I I'll I'll tag on to the the things that have already been been mentioned, but. Um you know, we have to think creatively, unfortunately, given the financials. Situation that the district currently is in to make sure that we are leveraging private. Um partnerships within the community. You know, White Sa- White Salmon does have the benefit of. We we have a lot of artists in this community. Um we do have a lot of folks who are very um very giving with their time. Um so we I think we we are positioned better than a lot of other districts that that um deal with these same issues. That said, that is not a replacement for a core arts education um or music education. These are things that are important to especially. Um you know, some of our most vulnerable students that this is the the thing that that is most important to the to to them and how their um. Their education is working. So I'll I'll continue to advocate, but. Primarily, we're we're looking at some additional funding from other sources and thinking creatively on how we can leverage those.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to general administration experience. How do you intend to address the ongoing challenges of recruiting, retaining qualified educators and support staff? What strategies or incentives do you believe can help improve staff retention? To ensure that students have consistent access to quality education? And we'll start with you, Chris.
Well, this uh our community, especially post pandemic. Is facing a housing crisis and it's becoming extremely difficult to to live here. So. Again, it comes back to money. We to retain teachers and staff. Uh we need to be able to to pay them a wage that they can afford to to live in this community. Uh long term, I'm interested in doing creative solutions such as. Find and mentor students who want to become public school teachers and. Mentor them through the process. And once they go to college and come back. Maybe they become teachers here because the local kids are going to have the. Means to find places to live uh in this the community.
Matthew, how do you intend to address the ongoing challenges of recruiting and retaining qualified educators and support staff? What strategies or incentives do you believe can help improve staff retention to ensure students have consist consistent access to quality education?
Well, the primary one, I I think uh Chris just touched on it is, you know, in ensuring that there is a a nice pipeline for. Newly educated teachers to come to this this area. I I think Lori would probably say the same thing as me, as somebody grew up here. It's heartbreaking to watch people go go out, be trained to be teachers and can't move back to 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 serve the district. That's heartbreaking to see. So. You know, anything that we can do in terms of partnership with other agencies to talk about affordable housing. Um some of the barriers that exist to um our kids getting trained and coming back and being teachers in the district. Which is a wonderful thing for us to do because that that, you know, they have that special knowledge as a somebody. Um who who knows the area, knows the community, knows the population. And being able to re- retain stu- uh current teachers is really asking what their current needs are. Um doing our best within the financial means that we have right now to to address that. Um and see if there there's additional things that we can do. Um but I I'd survey and make sure that we're getting um feedback from from our teaching staff.
Thank you. And now Lori, how do you intend to address the ongoing challenges of recruiting and retaining qualified educators and support staff? What strategies or incentives do you believe can help improve staff retention to ensure students have consistent access to quality education?
Um well, until the state legislature fixes this very flawed prototypical school funding model. Um which is why we are consistently hurting for money. Um I think we really need to focus on a couple of things. Um enrollment that has dropped. Um we need to build up programs that will draw in more families, young families who are having kids. Shoring up some policies and practices in our building so that students aren't leaving for bullying or for a better educational experience. I think we had, we have to have a very clear and uh disciplined budget plan, a long-term budget plan to build up our capacity. To be able to pay our teachers and staff and administrators um a livable wage. So that we can recruit and retain highly qualified staff. And then uh like these gentlemen have said, advocacy and partnering with agencies in the area. Um like land trust to possibly build some uh some homes or some properties that are affordable just for teachers.
Thank you. What steps would you take to ensure that marginalized and underserved student populations receive equitable access to services and support? And we'll start with you, Matthew.
Um I'll harp back to to training for uh for student uh for for our staff and and teachers and ensuring that that. People understand the um. These unique cultural needs of our community and our students. So you know, we have a third of our our students are um Latino, Latina, Latinx. Um you know, sixteen percent of our students are um learning English. And that take the approach for actually supporting those students and families. It's very different that than some of our more privileged students that who are folks from different backgrounds. Um and ensuring that we have uh staff training for. Understanding what the unique needs of those students are in unique communities. Is paramount and that is an ongoing process and something that we have to revisit every single year and ensure that that people are staying up to date on those trainings.
Thank you. And now Lori, what steps would you take to ensure that marginalized and underserved student populations receive equitable access to services and support?
There is no way to answer that in a minute. Um but I think that is one of our top priorities in the district, probably one of our top three. Um equity itself is a huge question and to be a little bit more focused, I really think we need to. Uh take some really deep dives into our policies and practices and attitudes at our schools, specific to our Latino, Latina students and their families. Um and understanding the barriers that we have in place that prevent them from excelling and and achieving. But there are other populations, um other groups of kids, LGBTQ, uh low socioeconomic, uh students in foster care. Migrant families, um homeless students. There are so many reasons why school is not. Accessible the way it should be. And we we've got a lot of work to do, um but that is um. One of our top three priorities, I think, and I believe the superintendent would agree. Um and I think we need to have some committees to really dive in and put in the work on this.
Thank you. And now Chris, what steps would you take to ensure that marginalized and underserved student populations receive equitable access to services and support?
I think you need to identify what the inequity is and the best way about doing that is is route reaching to those groups. So they can communicate to you how how they feel things have not been divvied up uh fairly or equally. And um that's.
Our last question of the evening. What is your perspective on the role of the school board and collaborating with community partners? And how do you envision leveraging these partnerships to benefar- benefit our students? We'll start with you, Lori.
When my son was about to start in kindergarten, I was living in Hood River. And I moved into White Salmon specifically because of the school and the school community. I have I've worked in large districts and I've worked in small districts and I've never known a school. That was so embraced by the community around it. Um I think. All we can do is continue to appreciate and foster those relationships and those community connections. Continue to draw in partnerships of people who are here and didn't know they had something to offer. Uh but this community is absolutely amazing and it it's overwhelming sometimes when I see the generosity and the support and the rally behind schools. Year after year after year after year. We just have to continue to take care of it.
Thank you, Lori. Chris, what is your perspective on the role of the school board and collaborating with community partners? And how do you envision leveraging these partnerships to benefit our students?
Uh well, the school board is the kind of the liaison between the the partnerships and. Uh what's the question one more time, please?
What is your perspective on the role of the school board and collaborating with community partners? And how do you envision leveraging these partnerships to benefit our students?
I don't have anything more to add.
Alright, oh. Matthew, what is your perspective on the role of the school board and collaborating with community partners? And how do you envision leveraging these partnerships to benefit our students?
Uh I I view it as a main role. Um you know, us as potential school board members. Um we represent the community and we're working within the the community. So I. You know, us being uh liaisons to community organizations, we have some wonderful nonprofits here in the gorge, just doing amazing work. We're we're very lucky comparative to a lot of rural communities and in some of the the work and supports that we we can leverage. Um and I think it's also recognizing that the district isn't necessarily always the content experts in some of those supports. So. In partnering with 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 folks like the hospital or Washington George Action Programs um or or some other local nonprofits. And looking to them to help with grant writing, looking to them for helping with with some of the project management uh of of supports that would really benefit our students. It it's kind of recognizing what are our strengths as a community and where can you find those resources? And I do think that is a a main role for us as a as a board.
Thank you. Now each candidate will have one minute to close. They can also use this time to clarify anything that was said during the forum. And we'll start with you, Chris.
Uh my profession is a videographer, so I spend a lot of time behind the camera. So uh. I'm looking forward to uh working in the community and getting better, becoming a better public speaker.
Matthew, you have one moment, one minute.
Great public speaker, Chris. Um. I I think though, because we I I got cut off at the the beginning, just a a few things to to mention in terms of. Uh you know, what I'm hoping to bring to the this position. I I also have a background in academia. Um I worked as the uh institutional researcher at Columbia Gorge Community College doing students success work. Um and it was incredibly rewarding and something that I'm hoping to come come back to um now having moved into more of a public health field. Um professionally, but um. Education is near and dear to me. Um I in grad school worked as a ESL teacher. Um also, I think one of the best jobs I ever had um and incredibly rewarding and I very feel very much feel for our wonderful. Teachers and the wonderful work that they're doing. So I I I bring some of that background to this position, hoping to kind of leverage some of those skills and um you know, lastly, just. I I care a lot about this community and look forward to um potentially serving in this role um and getting to volunteer my time.
Thank you, Matthew. And now Lori, you have one minute.
Um I I think one last thing I wish I could have had time to say when we were talking about equitable access to education. I think. Next time we do this, um we need to find a way to have these conversations translated into Spanish. I would like to find out if there's a way to have these discussions maybe this time. Um with our Latino, Latina families and communities. Um that's a huge segment of our kids that uh and community that we. Uh we don't have a good reach into um. I I think that's a that's a missing piece. At our board meetings, this event. Who how do the parents even know who they want to vote for? How do they know which one of us is going to really embrace their kids and their family's needs? We we need to do so, so much better in that respect.
Thank you to all three of you. This concludes our candidates forum for the evening. On behalf of the League of Women's Voters and the Columbia Gorge News, we thank all of our candidates for their participation tonight. And we also thank the public for attending this forum to become more informed voters. Tonight's recordings will be available on YouTube on the and on the League of Women's Voters Facebook page. Be sure to head to vote411.org if you need any other election information. And please remember to mark your ballot and return it in the time to be counted in the general election on November seventh. Thank you to everyone. Thank you to everyone in the public, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for asking me to moderate this very positive, positive discussion. Have a great night.